At this time, I'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. Our first item then would be to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on November 26, 2019. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections?
Move to approve.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote.
Just, yeah, go ahead.
You have something?
I just have to catch up here. Okay, I'm ready.
We'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting, and that motion does pass. So we'll move then to agenda item number three. This is the first of several public hearings that we'll have this evening. Agenda item number three is a public hearing to consider the adoption of the ordinance and the amendment to add interim use permit with the associated changes. I'll call on Ilya Gutman to introduce this as part of this ordinance as part of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So some time ago, it was brought to the attention of the staff that the way we are handling the home occupation permits is not compliant with the statutes. We're doing it with a conditional use permit, and the conditional use permit does not allow any time limitations which we had for the home occupations. The staff looked at that, and the idea was to introduce interim use permit. It's a permit similar to conditional use permit, except that it allows time limitations. The statutes allow that, and some cities have that thing. Some cities have it and don't use it, but some cities use it for a condition for home occupation. The staff's idea is that that's probably the best way of handling home occupation permit. It still allows some control, but on the other hand, it allows a timeframe if necessary. So the conditional use permit division was revised with adding provisions for interim use permit, and the home occupation was changed in order to fit into the interim use permit. Also, a few changes were made for the home occupation conditions to make it more consistent and easier to apply. So it was introduced less time in the council meeting. It was approved by the LNO committee and by the planning commission.
Okay, thank you, Ilya. We'll open up for input as part of the public hearing, either from the council or the public, the audience present, or from the legislative ordinance committee.
So a lot of work went on through LNA, or Illinois, and Planning Commission to do this, and we had a lot of discussion about it and hammered it out, and we are presenting from the Legislative Inordinance Committee a product that we think fits everything and allows us flexibility with that interim use permit, because a conditional use permit does go with the land. You can't put time limits on it. We think this is a better regulation to law, more flexibility.
I just have Section F, it's on page three, item seven. Kyle, can you pull that up on the...
Page 22.
Excuse me, page 22. It says item three, page 22. I didn't like the wording of this, because first of all, any illegal activity, well, you're not going to do it anyway. And I think this should be limited to any activity that may be considered objectionable and stop it at that, instead of pinpointing certain professions, saying they're objectionable because they are in business in Marshall, and it's not fair to say that their businesses are objectionable.
So your suggestion is after the word objectionable, period?
Stop. Any activity that may be considered objectionable, and just simple, plain, and leave it at that.
So the question, we discussed that. The question becomes, what's objectionable to me may not be objectionable to you, and what's objectionable to you may not be objectionable to me.
So it leaves it up to the council to make that decision?
I hadn't thought of it that way. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I'd be okay with that.
Ilya, any...
Yeah, that is fine. We will change it.
Yeah.
After?
Later. Any other input as part of the public hearing from the council or the public? If not, on a voice vote, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second motion by Steve, seconded by John to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll now consider the ordinance amendment to add the interim use permit with the associated changes. And of course, there is one change that was just discussed as part of the public hearing to make that change.
I would make that motion.
That change.
With that change, yes.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Russ, to adopt the interim use permit with the change to item seven on page 22. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number four. This would be the, consider the adoption of the ordinance amendment to Section 62-2, the snow removal on private streets. Once again, I'll ask Ilya Gutman to present this.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So I think last year, there was a new section, a change to the snow removal on the public streets. There was a change to add private streets to that thing, and there was some concerns during the winter about the width of the path to clear. So to clarify that, we're suggesting to add the specific width to be cleared. 16 feet is required width that must be cleared. It, again, it went through the, through the LNO, and it was introduced last.
Okay, thank you. We'll open up for input as part of the public hearing. John?
Just a comment, the 16 feet actually came in with discussion with the fire chief that trucks are eight feet wide at least to go through, and if you don't want to trap somebody in a, like say, a cul-de-sac area or something like that. So the 16 feet came about to allow for a fire truck and another vehicle to go by, and as well, the fire truck has to put out its, you know, has to raise a ladder or something like that. It needs to get the pads set out and takes up quite a bit of room, so reason for the number being put in there.
Okay, any other input? Dennis?
I was just going to second that motion. I asked Fire Chief Brunswick if he would want to address that if an issue came up tonight, but mostly from emergency vehicles to have wide enough access to facility.
So 16 feet is about the bare minimum you want?
Yeah, minimum 16 feet.
Because I know two, because I think legal width of a vehicle is 8'6", so technically you can't get two vehicles to pass on a 16-foot swat. I mean, do we want to leave it that small, or should we make it a little wider? I mean, I think 16 is very narrow, but I think 20 would be more appropriate, because then you can technically get two vehicles to pass at one time. A 16-foot swat, you might not be able to get two cars past each other.
But remember, this is on a private street.
Right, our average. I get that, and I, I mean, I'm fine at the bare minimum. I'm fine at 16 if that's the council's, I just, it's the bare minimum.
Right, the only issue that I would have, and again, I'd ask Fire Chief, is there an issue if we have a 16-foot minimum, is there an issue with getting an ambulance by?
You might not get two trucks side by side.
Two trucks. If you need them.
Ideally, if I remember reading it correctly, I think it states that if it has curbs on the street, it's supposed to be curb to curb, correct?
Yes.
But if there isn't...
It says, right now, it says, "All snow and ice remaining upon public sidewalk and private streets is declared to constitute a public hazard." So in theory, the whole thing, whether even there is a curb on that, should be cleared.
An engine that's got stretched lines will never have anybody else go past it either way. We can move it. Depends if we're hooked to the hydrant, but if the aerial's deployed, 20 feet obviously would be...
Well, you put your aerial out with, how wide do you need on that aerial?
I don't have the exact dimensions, but I'll bet it's close to 16 feet.
You're right at your max at 16.
Yep, right there. There may not be a lot of places in private streets. Now, I can't remember any throughout all the town or all the city where we would deploy the aerial apparatus, but you just never know. It all depends on what the situation is.
Do we have any public streets, like, I'm thinking Walker Lane, that are less than 20 feet?
We wouldn't try to, yeah, we wouldn't try to get the aerial apparatus down that street.
What I'm getting at is that, you know, we probably shouldn't set a restriction on private streets less than what we would expect.
How wide is Palater Street? Because that's probably one of the most narrow, and I had my rental on fire. You guys were pinched in there to get trucks in there.
We got in there, but...
You did.
We had to, we had to grease up the sides of the truck to get in.
Glenn, do you know how wide Palater Street is?
Right away versus street width is another thing, but the Walker Lane is about the narrowest, but all of our alleys are 18, 20 feet or less, but a lot of them are 16 to 18 feet in the alleys as well.
I mean, I'm fine at 16 if you think it'll work for you.
It's kind of on, you know, we have a pickup truck with a plow. If we have to quick-make it a little bit wider, so be it. Ideally, you won't get other traffic past it, you're correct, but a lot of times, we're going to close it down anyway. The street's going to be closed.
Because I just think if you have to get an ambulance past it to get to somebody else, you're not moving all your equipment. You get the ambulance past and have to set your equipment back up.
Try to set the ambulance in a spot where they can have a pretty rapid means of egress. So we kind of try to set up a scene as best as we can that way, but every situation's different.
You know, just as another point of discussion on this, there's some streets in town that are, that are right at 40 feet or even a little bit less, and when they're parked on both sides of the street, you don't have 16 feet, you know? So I just, you know, it's serviceable at 16. The insurance here isn't to have two-way traffic, it's to make sure that we at least have reasonable one-way traffic, and especially, I mean, kind of looking at the, at the issue last year that led to this conversation, 16 feet would have been a blessing there. So I think 16 is reasonable.
Yeah. It's doable. Obviously, curb to curb would be best if we can make that happen, but 16 feet is the bare minimum, as Councilman Lazinski stated.
Thank you. Quentin, the, any other input as part of the public hearing? If not, on a voice vote, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We'll now consider the ordinance, adoption, the amendment to the snow removal on private streets.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Motion passes. Thank you, Ilya. We'll move to agenda item number five. This is the first of four agenda items that address tax abatement requests. Agenda item number four is 1500 Travis Road. This is a public hearing regarding a business tax abatement request. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor.
Sharon Hanson, City Administrator.
Mr. Mayor and council members, included in your packet and as part of the public hearing requirement and notice, there is a request for a commercial tax abatement. It is a 28,000-square-foot, one-story metal building, housing a bus garage and travel agency. The abatement that was, is proposed and was included in the, in the notice and later on for your consideration, the resolution, is for a four-year agreement, abatement at 80%, 60%, 40%, and 20% abatement. The approximate total abatement would be $24,608. I do want to note that the owners of the, of the facility, Tom and Jim High, did also present to the EDA Board at their last meeting, the EDA Board did approve the recommendation to, and recommend to council to approve the abatement at those percentages and for that approximate abatement amount. I know later on in the agenda, we're going to talk about timing of construction, the application, but for this particular public hearing, it's straightforward with the amount of the abatement and the request that is before you.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. So as part of the public hearing, I'd entertain any public input either from the council or from members of the audience.
I just have a couple of questions regarding the abatement here. The property in question here was destroyed by a fire, and then they rebuilt on that location. So is the usual policy going to be that if your house or building is destroyed by fire and you rebuild, that you would then qualify for an abatement?
I think the answer, according to our policy, would be yes. Any other input as part of the public hearing?
And move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve to close the public hearing. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Aye.
No, we're going to, we're on the electronic then here.
Sorry, we've done...
Nice.
We'll close the voting, and the motion does pass.
Green or red?
So then we'll move to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number five. This is the resolution for the approving the business tax abatement at 1500 Travis Road. Is there any question about the resolution?
The only question I have on the resolution is, we previously passed one where they were penalized, and I think that if we approve this one without a penalty, we need to correct that one, so that business owner is not penalized.
It's actually coming down, it's down on the agenda.
The later recommendation, but good point.
Then I don't have any.
But thank you for bringing that up.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Any...
Make a motion to approve. I'll second it.
Motion by Jim, sec, or motion by John, seconded by Jim. Discussion?
I just follow up on my point before. It's my understanding this property was valued at about 570,000 before the fire, and after the fire, it was 175,000. And after the improvements, it's 1,258,000. And so I'm wondering if, you know, is, I guess I'm thinking that the purpose of the abatement, isn't it to encourage new construction and improvements? And here, they're just restoring something that was already there and replacing something with insurance money that was already there. So is it, is it really accomplishing the purpose of increasing construction in the city of Marshall if they're just using insurance money to replace what was already there?
I'll make one comment on that, and maybe others can too. The, you are correct in that it did replace the structure that was providing that purpose. However, they also did expand that, as many of us saw during their open house, and they improved it, the investment there and invested in things like energy efficiency and efficiency and size of the building to accommodate the modern size of buses. But I think more importantly, this building, as you noted, Glenn, was destroyed, and the owners of this building had a choice to make, and that would be, do they make that investment in the city of Marshall, or do they make it somewhere else? And thankfully, they chose to make it in the city of Marshall, and I think that kind of is one of the purposes of this incentive to make that reinvestment. And I'm, for one, I'm glad that they made that decision.
Yeah, and I would agree. I mean, the building, having been in it before, it's now bigger, better, and more modern, and so from that standpoint, it's done what that incentive is supposed to do.
Exactly, and that's, the abatement is to encourage people to improve the property and improve the value to the property, which is an enticement, because after the abatement piece is done, well, obviously, it's 80%, 60%, 40%, 20%, we're going to continue to get increased revenue because of that investment. So it is a net gain to the city, and I think that's exactly what's our intent with doing the abatement.
And my take on this is how they pay for it is not a concern of the city of Marshall. Ours is out there abatement, how they pay for it is not, that's not for us to decide.
And nobody is, nobody's suggesting otherwise.
We don't know if they have insurance. Do you know, I mean, I'm assuming they have insurance on the building, but we don't even know that.
Well...
Nor do I, nor do I feel like we need to ask them that question.
The point I'm trying to make is this, that the property before was worth 570, and it's now worth 1,258. So it went up about 700,000 in value, and I, you know, if you're, the question is, do you have the abatement on the increase from what it was before to what it is now, the 700,000, or do you use the abatement on the entire amount after it was destroyed by a fire? That's the question. And again, before the fire, the property was assessed at 570, and now it's 1,258. So it went up 600,000 or about 700,000 in value. So is that the amount we should be using for an abatement, or should you, what it was, after it was burnt down, and use the full 1,083,000? So I mean, that's the question I have.
And Sharon, you want to address that?
And I don't want to speak with specifics on the, on the highs, but in discussions with the application, insurance did not make them whole, and I just want to be clear on that, that it wasn't a total dollar-for-dollar payment for them. And typically, it is not.
Right.
When it comes to insurance and catastrophic events, clearly like this was, it is mentioned. The one thing I do want to point out, and it was a map that was included, and correct me, city assessor, if I'm wrong, but on the abatement, we actually did just do the abatement on the parcel that contains the new construction. It wasn't for the part of the building that had, that had the existing structure. So it's just the parcel that contains the, the new construction.
No, I would agree with you, Glenn. It should be on the pre-fire value to the new value. So what value is it on, Dave? Pre-fire, after fire? Are we doing the abatement on? Because I do agree it should be on the 570 to the million, the pre-fire value, not the...
I don't know if you need that. It's on the back.
So, again, I'm just the middle man here with the numbers, not the abatement man. So what's your question?
Is the abatement value, like Glenn was asking, is it going, the value increase for the abatement, is it from the 570 to the 1.1 million, or the 175 to the 1.1 million?
The improvement that the abatement is calculated upon is the, the value that was left after the destruction, so it's just the land and the portion of the building that remained, so not the 569.
It was the 175.
The 175.
That answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
I guess my question is, why are we, you know, the improvement should be, I believe I agree with Glenn on this, from the 570 up to the 1.1 million.
I think the abatement should be on the new investment.
Mm-hmm.
New construction.
That would be, I think that's really the intent of the whole abatement, is on new construction.
Yep, and I agree with that. I mean, I totally understand Glenn's point and Jim's point with that, but this wasn't, this wasn't a remodel. No, but if they would have tore it down, the value would have never gone down to 175. It would have stayed at the 570, they increased to the 1.1 million. So they did, they, it's the same as a new investment. If they would have built a new garage, they tore it down, which is fine, it would have, the value would not have dropped to 175 for the fire. It would have stayed at the 5.7, or 570,000, and then jumped to the 1.1 million.
Right, but you're making suppositions. We have what happened. We have a fire, brought it to the ground, so assume that it's a bare piece of ground that somebody's got to build a new building on, and has the choice to build a new building.
And that was the choice.
And that was the choice. And so I would say, in a catastrophic case like this, if you make a new investment based upon a catastrophic event, you go off the value after the catastrophic event, because that's what you're starting from. Does that make sense? Now, if you have a building and you decide to remodel it, the building's there, you're deciding to remodel, the building's not down. But in a case like this, where the building, A, has to come down, because after the fire, it's going to have to come down anyway, then you're building from scratch, basically. It's like it's a bare piece of ground, and that would be where the abatement would come from, you're building a bare piece of ground. That's my argument. I speak in favor of doing it the way it is.
Did we charge for permits on this?
Yes.
That's part of the policy. Okay, so I recall, I recall other fire damage residential where, because the, the total loss, we waived permit fees, we waived a number of other city fees. It was on a garage on, I believe, Fourth, Fourth Street. So, I mean, we do have the ability to, to take these things into consideration. We also allowed other variances to go point with that garage, because it had missed some other plans, and we did it because we want to encourage our residents and our property owners to restore their property in Marshall. The Hys certainly had an option to not put this in city limits, and there may or may not have been a benefit or something other attractive with that, but they did the business decision, they rebuilt here, they're keeping that business, which is a substantial employer and a lot of service within the community, and they kept it here, and I think we should support that. That was our whole intent, to put this abatement policy in place, and I think this is an absolute proper use of it.
And we didn't previously deal with fees and charges on this, on this catastrophic event. Is there any other input on, and discussion on this motion?
I just, last, I'm going to support this. I agree, great, Craig, and we need to support our businesses, and, you know, we always talk about, let's give tax breaks or give breaks, or this is a way to help a business do remodels. So I will support, or not remodel, but reinvest in Marshall. So I am supportive of this, you know, I do question, good discussion on questioning the numbers.
It is.
So the public knows where we came from or why we did what we do.
Yep. Other discussion on the motion?
The, the one thing then should be that people that look for abatements in the future, if they have a fire, they should know that the abatement's going to be based on after the, or before, or after the fire, and then with the new improvements. So it should be consistently computed time after time.
And I agree 100% with that.
Because, because I think your number, the 175,000, is based on the assessed value for tax purposes, and so if they, if they build within a year and the assessed value doesn't change for tax purposes, then do you have to go out and determine what it was worth after the fire and then after the improvements? Or, I mean, I'm wondering about the logistics here, because it seems like you're saying that we have to know the value that after the fire and after the improvements to determine how much qualifies. And right now, we're basing it on the assessed value for tax purposes, and that's not always going to be available.
So if I think I've followed you correctly, you're questioning the 175 valuation? That's the value that was established as of January 2, 2019.
Right, and that was after the fire.
Correct.
Yeah, and so if somebody had a fire damage and built, rebuilt in that year right away, how would the city know what the value was right after the fire?
We would probably have to manually try and calculate that out if it all occurred within the same calendar year.
So you, it would have to be determined on that case basis?
Yeah.
Right, but we would need to do that if we're going to be consistent with this.
You're correct.
Correct.
And so I just want staff and the community to know that that's the way it should operate, because we can't go by necessarily what the assessed values are in our tax statements, if we're going to be consistent with what you're doing it now.
Yep, that's a good point.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on that motion. We'll close the voting, and the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number seven, 301 Stevens Avenue. Before we move there, the, I think, you know, the council, we should commend the Southwest Tour and Travel, Southwest Coaches for their reinvestment in, in their facility in the city of Marshall. It should serve your business and the community well, well into the future, so thank you.
Can I address the council? Can I?
Yes, you can. Yes.
You know, as we've gone through this whole process, and I mean, it's, it's probably been the most difficult thing I've been through in my 40-some years that I've been involved in their business that we've had. And as you'd indicated, Mayor, is that we had choices, is, I mean, we could have picked up our toys and went elsewhere, we could have done other things, but we decided that Marshall's been a really good community to us, we've made a lot of friends, we've have a lot of family here, we've done things. Marshall's done a lot for us, so we said, you know what? This is where we need to be. So we've done this. To answer some of the questions is, we did receive a nice insurance check, but by any means did it cover and make us whole. We made a substantial personal investment back into that business to make sure that that business was positioned going forth. This is actually the fifth addition slash remodel that we've done in that business since it was in 1977. And obviously, we're hoping this is the final and last one that we're having to do, because this is, is really not the way that I would do it. I wouldn't wish that upon my worst enemy to go what we threw, but I guess I just wanted to kind of share that, and also thank you guys for your support through the years, and the community of Marshall, because it's meant a lot to us, is our support from the community has been overwhelming, so thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move to, hope we can do that, when we get, when we get to that. We'll move to agenda item number seven, 301 Stevens Avenue. This is a public hearing regarding the home property tax abatement request. This is the public hearing. Sharon, I'll ask you to introduce.
Mr. Mayor and council members, included in your packet was a home tax abatement request, and as part of the, again, the requirement for tax abatements is a requirement for a public hearing. This is for an apartment building. It's a non-nine-unit apartment building, and our policy states that, I believe it's when it's 12 and under for units, it would qualify for a home tax abatement rather than a commercial tax abatement. In the policy for home tax abatement, clearly stipulates the amount of abatement. It's two years at 100%. And the total tax abatement amount was included in your packet as well, with just a little bit over 5,000 in a period of two years. The owner of the, of the building was not able to make it tonight, but I indicated that we haven't had a lot of questions on home tax abatements, and, and so I felt we could take this without him being present.
Okay. Any input as part of this public hearing? Either from the council or members of the audience? If not, is there a motion to close this public hearing?
No.
Motion by Russ, seconded by John, to close the public hearing. We'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Motion passes. Now we'll move to agenda item number eight. This is consideration of the resolution approving the home property tax abatement for 301 Stevens Avenue. Is there questions about this resolution?
I move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to approve the resolution. Discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting, and the motion does pass. We'll now move then to agenda item number nine. This is the truth in taxation hearing. At this hearing, this is the hearing on the proposed tax that will be, and budget that will be considered by the council at their next regular meeting, which will be December 17. Call on Sharon Hanson to make this presentation.
Okay. Mayor and council members, I did want to present the truth in taxation for the 2020 levy, and I thought I'd do it facing the council members and the camera instead of from the side. We've got about 20 slides. I know maybe for some, it may be a little bit extended, because there isn't typically a high interest in truth and taxation public meetings, but it'll be a good review of kind of what we discussed in previous budget work sessions, and for those who weren't able to attend. But the purpose of the truth and taxation, see if I got this right. See how much I'm up here.
It's all right, your review is done.
The purpose is to explain the proposed budget and the tax levy for 2020, and then obtain feedback on the proposed city budget. The market values shown on your truth and taxation notice were established in the spring, and are not a subject for the hearing tonight. If there are questions from anybody in attendance on values, we do have our city assessor here, and immediately following this presentation, he can certainly try to answer questions on values for those that may have brought in a truth and taxation notice. And if he's not able to answer them, he can set up an appointment to answer those. Values for the 2019 assessment, taxes payable 2020, were discussed and established at the local board of review and local board of equalization, which was held earlier this year. And one thing to point out when it comes to the particular 2019 assessment, this was really work that Dave was doing in 2018, so the viewing of properties and the assessment that he did. So it's a long process to get from where we started to here. Just a review on the budget timeline. As we stated earlier this year, we did market values, and then, of course, the local board of appeal and equalization. We started the budget process in, in June, and, and let me just add, the staff do a tremendous amount of work on their, on their budget, and there's a lot of back and forth, especially with the finance department, that being the finance director, Carla Drown, and then also administrative services director, Nat Storm. And typically, they're, they're really doing a lot of the communication on, on changes with the budget. And we have made some changes from the preliminary levy, which we'll cover briefly. In September, we did adopt the preliminary levy, and in November, the truth and taxation notices were mailed. And what we propose tonight is that we adopt the 2020 levy and the 2020 budget at the December 17 city council meeting. And then, of course, the following March, we will mail out the property tax statements. The next slide, which is in relatively small print, but our city assessor does have handouts, and I will have him talk about this particular slide.
So I'm just going to give you kind of a brief rundown of some of the values and tax capacities, because I know some of these next slides are going to talk about net tax capacity and how that plays a part in the equation of, of taxes. So before you could see the changes that we saw from 18, pay 19, to 19, pay 20. And this is a very summarized report. Overall, there's probably about 50 to 60 different classifications and different line items, but I kind of compressed them into these, into these groupings that have the same classification rates, so you can kind of get an idea. So as you can see, we had some growth in our residential values, and we saw some decreases in certain areas. Probably some of the larger decreases we saw is in some state-assessed property. And again, that's property that the state assesses, not at a local level. Typically, your railroad, transmission lines, utility pipelines, and those nature types of properties that are state-assessed. And we have really no authority over those values. It's whatever the state gives us. So that, that was a significant drop from prior year. And just a couple, if you're looking at this, just a couple talking points, you may see some of the counts. Those are parcel counts, and you might be thinking, why did the residential parcels go down? They didn't really go down. There's a lot of moving parts into these counts. Some of it's just record-keeping. For instance, if we had a property that was a residential homestead, and it was receiving half homestead, half non-homestead, we had two records on that parcel, so we just kind of cleaned some of that stuff up. So we're not losing homes, so don't panic. Commercial-industrial, looks like that, you know, that count of the number of those properties way up. Part of that, we see splits, combinations, and we do have the industrial commerce park out there that's been platted, so that added to that for a brief time, taxable parts of that. Overall, values up about 1.65% from last year, and giving us a taxable market value, 1.8 increase, and then we're going to see a tax capacity of about 1.15%. And just keep in mind, as Sharon will get to in a couple of slides, she's going to talk about tax capacity, and you're going to see a different number than the 12,427,804. Think of this as your gross tax capacity. We'll need to subtract any TIF or any other programs like that from the net to get to your taxable net tax capacity for, for 2020. So, any questions on this particular slide? Fun stuff? Okay.
The next chart is something that you've likely seen before in the last two years. We've actually published this as part of the city administrator column in the Marshall Independent, and this is just showing how we rank with other communities in terms of our tax rate, and we rank favorably. So out of 16 other communities, we're the 10th lowest tax rate in comparison to the, to the other communities. And then overall, we're 13th. The county tax rate is relatively low, and it really helps us with the overall tax rate. But in comparison, we rank favorably. One thing I'll add to this, we've been, Dave and I have both been really waiting for more of a comprehensive comparison. This is work that Dave has done, just by securing and asking for information. But we really would like the entire state, and the Department of Revenue hasn't been able to provide that. But I don't know if you saw this, Dave, but in the last day or so, we actually did get all of the state information from all the communities. So in the future, we'll be able to do a lot more analysis on how Marshall ranks in comparison to other communities. Just want to talk about this a little bit, on who pays our taxes. Commercial-industrial is about half of our payment for our property tax levy. A big reason for this, not only because of the tax capacity, as Dave talked about, but also the tax rate. They are taxed at a 2% rate in comparison to residential, which is at 1%. So when we have growth, new construction, it's really important to see that business, commercial-industrial growth. It really helps the, lower our tax rate or moderate the tax rate. Of course, home construction, residential expansion does help too, but the biggest impact is on our commercial-industrial, and they do pay for, for half of the, half of the property tax levy. I do want to add another impact for commercial-industrial. Taxpayers has nothing to do with the city of Marshall, and it's, it's called the state general tax. And Dave and I were talking a little earlier today, we, we think this is about a 15-year-old tax, where the, the state of Minnesota takes tax money, or receives tax money from our commercial business, property taxpayers as well, and it has impacts on them. And what the state legislature has done recently has done some exclusions on value, and I think it's at $100,000 or $150,000 of exclusions. And I know our local representative, Senator Dames, Representative Swedinski's, always proposes that looking at upping the, upping the exclusion limit to help soften some of the state general property tax liability for our taxpayers. But it's been very helpful for some of the exclusion work that they've done for the state of Minnesota. Just going to briefly cover the 2020 general fund budget as part of tonight's presentation. Here's just a graph showing the historical levy for the city of Marshall, and I have a chart later that talks about percentages. But typically, you know, we're looking at anywhere between 250,000 to a little over 400,000 on an annual basis of new, of new tax levy dollars that are used to help balance the budget. This, this particular year, we're proposing a 3.99% increase, which is 270,642 dollars of new, new money. It's actually really on the low side, and I'll explain a little bit on that. We did get some revenue support in a couple areas, which helped keep the levy at 3.99. But typically, on an average year, you really should be looking at a $400,000 increase in, in, in new tax money. I have a table on this a little bit later, too, and a credit to the legislature. This past year, the increase in local government aid was extremely helpful in our, in our levy budget setting preliminarily, and we received new revenue of approximately 115,000. And if we did not get the local government aid of 115,000, our levy increase would be at 5.68. So it's very helpful, and I'll talk a little bit about historical local government aid as well. Here's just a chart going back to 2008 on our levies and the percentages of increases. You'll know, last year, we were a little higher than we would have liked to have been, but we also had tax capacity growth, and that was due to a TIF capacity being brought back on as part of our capacity growth, and we were able to still maintain impact on taxpayers at a relatively low, low level. But overall, since 2008, our, our levy increase is approximately 4%. Tax capacity increase, this is, of course, always of interest to council and our staff in terms of what are we looking at really for growth? As I mentioned, last year, we had a little bit more room, because we brought a, a TIF project back into our capacity, and that is the 4.33. I think Dave mentioned earlier, really, if you look at our rate of growth, it was 1.65 approximately in that area, and what you see here is about 1%. And that's because, in this particular chart, it, it subtracted out that TIF, which is a requirement, that's part of the tax capacity and tax rate calculation, and how we come up with the property taxes. Eventually, we'll see that other .6 come back on when the, when the TIF project is brought back into tax capacity. into tax capacity. Just a breakdown on where the tax levy dollar goes. Large percentage goes into the general fund. That's where we're really focusing in on that. And that is, you know, really all of our services that we provide. And we've got a chart a little bit later, kind of breaking down the major areas of expenditure from police department to streets and general services. A small amount for capital equipment, and street improvements, and economic development, and then our debt service. I have a handout that delineates all those particular line items. Here's a pie chart showing the different property fund, property tax allocation. Where does the approximate $7 million go? And again, this breaks it down to some of those core services we talked about: public safety, public works, recreation, and general government. I'll talk a little bit more about some of our services when I have a chart comparing with other communities on our preliminary levy. In our revenue, you'll note the tax breakdown at 42%. This includes not only property taxes, but my understanding, there's also sales tax included with this as well? Franchise fees and so forth. Is the sales tax included with this? Okay. Our local government aid is about a third of the fund revenue, and then 20% for intergovernmental fines, service fees, forfeitures, et cetera. What impacted our 2020 levy, and again, some positive aspects of this, is we did receive a local government aid increase of $115,000. So we were really able to utilize that to keep the levy low for 2020. However, we did see a reduction in paracredit of approximately $15,000. So they gave and they take it away in that particular instance, but the local government aid still was a beneficial increase. Calculating it out, it's about percent and a half. I think I actually included in that 1.69 the entire $115,000. We'd have to subtract out the reduction in paracredit of $15,000, and I think we're down to about a percent and a half in terms of what it does to reduce the levy. In 2020, we did increase the utilization of our liquor store revenue. We're actually using $75,000 more to help balance budget in 2020, and currently, the inter-fund transfer for 2020, or what we're budgeting, is to transfer $300,000 into the general fund. And this is to keep the property tax low for 2020. And we are using reserves. I do have a breakdown of reserves. Let me just look at that quick. We are using approximately, projecting to use about $160,000 of reserve spending in 2020, and again, in efforts to keep the 2020 levy low. Some of the expenditure size impacts was personnel. We are in the people business. Most of our assets are in personnel, and so you're going to see an impact on our expenditures with personnel. This is very common if we were to compare with other cities. We did have a 3.25% cost-of-living adjustment. And I do want to talk a little bit about health insurance, because this past year, of course, for the 2020 year, the council made a decision to change health insurance. We did actually see an increase just based on rates, and that was from the Service Cooperative and our new provider. But also, we did have more family participation, which after the preliminary levy actually caused an impact on the 2020 levy, and we're going to talk about how we made that up here in a little bit. But just kind of relaying some of the comments made by the council, you feel that long-range move will ultimately save on rate increases and hopefully moderate that because of the insurance and the plan design. So we're going to pay now and hopefully save later with health insurance. Capital improvement plan bonding. I'm going to hand out as well just kind of a listing of what we're proposing for capital equipment, and in the levy is $400,000 for capital equipment. This is the same amount that we had in 2019, so we're not increasing that. And then in 2020, we are recommending that we look at bonding. We did not bond in 2019. We decided to, again, use 2019 as kind of a moderation year. We had a lot of projects going on from the previous year. And in terms of the bonding, you won't see a levy impact until 2021. So we'll establish the bonding. You'll obviously approve that, and we'll see the impact in 2021. Our goal for bonding is to minimize the impact to the levy at 2% or less. And let me just say, it doesn't take long to get to 2% because of the cost of infrastructure and the rising costs of equipment as well. So it really puts a lot of pressure. I do want to really highlight this, because again, you're going to get public feedback on the levy increase and the levy itself. We included $250,000 for debt reduction in the 2020 levy, and you can wipe it out. We don't recommend it because we had a long-term debt reduction financial plan analysis and study that was presented by Abdo Iken Myers, and we are implementing that plan as best as we can, and hopefully, we can stick with it. But part of the goal is to get a fund balance established for street construction, so they're not bonding every other year, or sometimes every year. And Annette and Carla, and I'll give a lot of credit to Annette, has an Excel spreadsheet that forecasts out, I would say, probably the next 20 years and how we can build that fund balance up. This is kind of the first step. So part of the levy increase, and I could equate it to 3.5%, and we've got revenue, too, so, but it equates to debt reduction, so it's really important. Another important thing I want to point out, I'm probably taking too long on this presentation, but it's important, and I've said this before, in 2019 to 2020, we had some existing debt that dropped off. We had savings from 2018 to 2019 of about 80-some thousand. We're going to use the drop-off debt, the 80-some thousand, and then the liquor store revenue, because their bond payment, we predict, will be paid off early to pay for the city hall construction. So we're going to be using existing revenue to pay for city hall. The next meeting, we're bringing back the bond resolution and bonding mechanisms. You approved a preliminary levy, but now we need to issue the sale of bonds. Then we'll have Springstead come forth along with finance to present that. Just some real miscellaneous things: increased library EDA funding. We talked a lot about EDA funding. That was a slight increase, and then I predict we'll see continued increases in that just because of the new model, and I did state that when we made the transition. We did make some increases in snow removal, in terms of snow hauling, where we contract with private contractors. And then also, the time involved with city staff moving snow. I believe at the end of 2018, we were about $70,000 over budget in snow removal. Probably included some flooding as well. We're going to make up some of that with FEMA. We don't have the exact amounts, but that'll help some revenue, which we didn't budget in for 2019 or 2020, but we'll see how we end up. But hopefully, for 2020, we will break even on that or maybe come ahead. We're not entirely sure yet on 2019. We'll see how the rest of the month turns out. I do want to add one of the changes from the preliminary budget to this final budget that we're proposing is, we did propose in the preliminary budget the addition of a streets employee, just based on rotation need, the demands of response, and what the streets department does. And unfortunately, I had to inform the public works director and the supervisor for streets, Dean Kudron. That would be really tough to do it for the 2020 levy. So we did eliminate that position. And I said to both of them, and we really want to see if we can consider that for 2021 again. Hopefully, we can get that back in there. But that was a change. And I know Councilmember Labat actually kind of helped with that suggestion a little bit, because you had a lot of discussion about maintenance, custodial, library, and how we're going to use that staff. So just to give you feedback, we did do the work on that, and we are not including it for the 2020 budget levy. And that helped mitigate some of the health insurance increases as well. Just a chart on local government aid tax levy. The one thing I just want to point out here, we got an increase in local government aid for 2020, but it's really, what it did is it brought us back to 2002 levels. We're very happy about it, but obviously, if you factor in inflation, the 2.5 million that we get in local government aid, if you base it on inflation, we actually should probably have about $1 million more in local government aid. But nonetheless, it's very helpful, and I know that we'll continue to kind of ask for increases in that particular area, because what it does, as shown on this chart, it impacts our property tax, our property tax levy, because we've got to come up and make up for it somewhere. Preliminary levies. I do have a few handouts on this. I can email this. I have a spreadsheet of all the cities in the state of Minnesota. I think overall, preliminary levy increases for the state was about 7.5%. So we're quite lower than the statewide average for preliminary levies. You see here the percentage increase for the cities that are shown. You also note some of the Wilmer and Worthington, which are looking at substantial changes in their levy. I can't speak for Wilmer. I haven't spoke to the administrator, but I know in Worthington, they are looking at a larger increase to help with street infrastructure and payment. So we'll see where that ends up. But I do have this, and let me add, too, it's really hard to compare city to city. Rarely is it comparing apples to apples. There's so many things that make Marshall different than the other communities. I'm sure they could say the same about their own city to us. We're a community that has got heavy industrial users, which puts pressure on our wastewater system. The Redwood River is an intermittent stream at times of the year, which means we have higher compliance limits for pollution control agency. We have a unique arrangement in community services that is unlike hardly anyone in the state. And we happen to have larger infrastructure needs in terms of stormwater because of the flooding and the location of the community as well. So obviously, we've got some other areas we could focus in on, but just kind of keep that in mind when we're comparing with other communities. This is something we presented in the preliminary budget as well, just kind of showing the impact on a homestead residential property. City portion only of their taxes. Of course, as most of us know, there's about 20 different reasons why your taxes may go up or down. This slide just really looks at what is the impact of a city property tax, not really kind of looking at the ups and downs of the value. But this particular slide is very similar to the 6.48 increase last year, because we had that capacity growth, so we kept it pretty similar for this year. And finally, I'll just kind of end here. As I stated earlier, we propose that we're going to adopt the levy on December 17th at 5:30. And one of the things maybe I'll hand out as well. This is the resolution. What's getting handed out is the adopting resolution for the levy. And this is what we plan on bringing back in terms of the council packet for the December 17th meeting. The other thing that is being handed out is the bonding and capital equipment request for 2020. Are there any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. We'll open it up for input as part of the public hearing. First off, is there a member of the audience here that wishes to speak or have questions as part of the public hearing? Any member of the council have input as part of this truth and taxation public hearing?
I question, Sharon, I have a clarification. You said in our levy, we have $250,000 built debt reduction.
Yep.
So, and then that's something the community has asked for at survey after survey, we've heard debt reduction. I just wanted to clarify that, though. Otherwise, our levy increase would be .38, or I can't do the math that quickly in my head, but it'd be very small. So a lot of our levy increase is being driven by what the community wants.
Correct.
Any other input as part of the public hearing? Thank you, Sharon. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moves.
Second. Motion by Jim, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting.
Don't close the vote.
It's technically not a public hearing, but you can close it if you want.
Okay. Now we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Thank you. We'll move then to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are in the consent agenda this evening. The, so the items on the consent agenda, consider the approval of the employment, retirement resolutions, consider the approval of the 2020 temporary and seasonal employee wage schedule, consider renewal of the 2020-2021 healthcare savings plan memorandum of understanding, consider the vacation of the utility easement in car subdivision one, receiving the petition for the vacation of the easement and call for the public hearing, consider the wastewater treatment facilities improvement project, a payment application, number five, to bag the construction, similar to the next agenda item on the consent of wastewater treatment facility improvement project, a payment invoice to American Engineering Testing Incorporated, consider the declaration of surplus items from the wastewater department, and to consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the items?
So moves.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Russ, you want to, you want to manually enter that? The motion does pass unanimously. We'll move then to agenda item number 18, consider the application for exempt permit for SMSU Foundation for an event October 12, 2019. Any questions on this?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. The motion passes. We'll note there's an abstention. Move then to agenda item number 19, which is a statement of performance evaluation for Sharon Hansen, city administrator, as well as to consider the approval of a step increase. So earlier this evening, the council, excuse me, the council did meet in special session to review the performance of city administrator Hansen. I will read into the record the summary of that evaluation. So Sharon Hansen has completed two years as Marshall city administrator. On November 16, 2019, at her employment anniversary date, the members of the Marshall city council conducted an annual performance review. As part of that review, each city council member and the mayor completed a performance evaluation. The evaluation instrument evaluated 10 critical performance competencies with four to five performance measures for each critical performance competency for a total of 48 performance measures. Each performance measure was assigned a numeric score of one to five, with five being the highest performance level. The council reviewed the results of the performance review with administrator Hansen earlier this evening at a special meeting. The critical performance criteria and the compiled performance score for each of those criteria criteria from each of the city council members are as follows. Job knowledge and performance skills, 4.13. Relations with elected members of the city council, 4.17. The policy execution, 4.27. Strategic vision, 3.97. Fiscal management, 3.97. Intergovernmental affairs, 4.18. Reporting and communication, 4.11. Citizen slash community relations, 4.50. Staffing, 4.13. And supervision, 3.84. So the overall performance evaluation measures for all the criteria from all of the city council members and the mayor is 4.13, which indicates a high level of performance, highly effective leadership, and performance that often exceeds the challenging performance expectation established for this position. With that, I would entertain a motion from the city council to accept the annual performance review.
So moves.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Now, discussion on that motion? If not, we'll have a voice vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Sharon, for your performance during this past year.
Mr. Mayor, do we need to consider the step increase now?
That is, the next item is to consider the approval of the step increase as allowed in our personnel policy.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to approve the step increase for city administrator Hansen. Discussion on that motion?
Mr. Mayor, I think that this step increase is completely appropriate, given the amount of work that our city administrator does and the excessive hours she puts in and her dedication to the improvement and betterment of the city. I speak in favor of this step increase.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Right, you know, rest of the calculation, right before the meeting, we just threw a number of hours out there. She puts in, let's say, $4,000 hours a year, which I don't think is an underestimation. That's only $35.90 an hour. So I think she does tremendous amount of work for the city of Marshall for compensation, and we should be glad that we have her here. Absolutely.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass unanimously. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
You're on for another year.
Yep.
We'll move then to agenda item number 20, the affirm the commercial tax abatement policy guidance. Sharon?
Okay. The EDA board, as you know, recently considered a commercial tax abatement for Southwest Tour and Travel, and there was a recommendation by staff to not have a penalty for that particular commercial tax abatement application. And some of this was related to what I believed was going to occur at the county level, in that they were not looking at doing a tax penalty. And one of the requirements for the commercial tax abatement on the county side is that the local entity must approve an abatement before they can qualify for the county. Now, that doesn't mean we still can't do a penalty or decide what level of abatement, because the statute clearly states it can be done on a case-by-case basis, and also that any abatement can be modified at any time. That's allowed by statute and by resolution. But what we find is, at least in the current year and going into next year, is we are getting some requests for abatements that are after construction. The policy states that in order to qualify for the abatement, it must be prior to construction. And the EDA direction to staff to bring to council was to get some kind of direction from council on how we want to implement the policy. Staff did look at policy language, and the staff before you tonight is not recommending a policy change, meaning that the requirement to have an application prior to construction remain in the policy, but for the next year, consider abatement applications on a case-by-case basis, as allowed by policy resolution in Minnesota statutes, and that the staff would bring forward to the EDA and to the council, abatements that happened after construction. So really for a year, just to kind of moderate in the enforcement of that particular provision. And the reason, besides the fact that we can look at these on a case-by-case basis, the staff did not recommend a formal change to that particular provision because, starting in 2021, we really want to see if we can get these abatement applications in before construction. That would be ideal. It is, it is better in terms of providing the incentive and calculation and showing the need, so to speak. So what we are requesting is that you affirm staff's work in this area for 2020, and that we will take applications as they come and likely forward them to the EDA and to the council for consideration even after construction. And then for 2021, we'll start following the policy as written, meaning that they have to have prior construction. We know that this is a relatively new policy, and there is still some awareness out there. And we certainly seen that in 2020, or 2019, and possibly into 2020. One of the other EDA recommendations, and I believe this is a separate agenda item following this discussion, is to revisit the Canoga childcare, Canoga Park childcare application, where there was a 10% reduction in penalty. And the EDA board also recommended that we delete that and get affirmation and support from that for the council. The EDA board wishes to do what the council would like them to do. They don't want to be in disagreement. And so this discussion and your direction tonight would be helpful, not only to staff, but to the EDA board as well.
Thank you, Sharon. Input from the council?
I think this is a good decision by staff to help get the knowledge out. You know, it gives us a year to get the information out. And I do agree after, you know, starting January 1st, 2021, to revert back to the policy. We've had a year, the knowledge is out there, and then folks then need to start following the policy. But it gives us a year to inform the public.
Any other input?
Actually, it's been over a year, but this way it gets, they're actually seeing the effect now, yes. So we get another year and just get that awareness out there. Yeah. So it's been kind of a struggle in EDA discussions, and, you know, we understand, I think the EDA board understands the intent and what we're trying to do, and encourage that, and just trying to follow a policy that's out there. So with this adjustment for the time being in interim, I think it's a good idea. And then we can look at it, you know, if we make any formal changes to it.
And I think when the formal changes come, and see when constructions start, can be arbitrary. I think we need to put it more firm as when the building permit is pulled, or when certificate occupancy is issued. Put firm dates on there, because when construction starts, when does construction start? That's kind of an arbitrary guess of when is construction. So I think at that time, the policy needs to be looked at and a firm date of when the building permit is issued, or you have until the certificate of occupancy is issued, and then those are very black and white dates.
Well, and as you say, Jim, that will be a future discussion.
That's future discussion, correct.
You know, the certificate of occupancy can be out there quite a ways.
It could be, but you know, if it's a big project, it's, you know, it still gives us a, it's a drop dead date. Here it is, you have it, now you're done.
One of the points of discussion we had talked about is trying to have it, at least the information available when they do request a permit, because at that point, there is no construction. And that, you know, they could have the information about the tax abatement when they get their permit, and that should give them ample time to fill it out, get it in before they're really get into that point.
There are times, and our building department is very good, where construction may be partially started before the building permit is completely issued, they'll issue a partial, and our building department is very good. Where you may have a foundation.
When they apply for it, they shouldn't be getting it before they apply for it.
There's, well, you apply for it, you know, that's true. There are times that you have a foundation in the ground before that building permit is issued, because it's freezing up. And our building department works very well with contractors, making that stuff come together for our builders.
But those are things that we can work out in this discussion. We've got a, you know, with, if we affirm this, we've got a year to work this through and coming out. So I move we grant the affirmation on commercial tax abatement policy guidance.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to agenda number 21. This is to amend the resolution by striking the language known as a 10% reduction for the tax abatement that was granted previously, the 10% reduction penalty for the Canoga Park daycare that was referred to earlier. Questions about this?
Just a comment, Mr. Mayor. This is just for kind of our recollection, this is the one that kind of started this whole discussion about commercial properties, and I believe it took three motions before we had a successful motion, and we really struggled with this. And I think that this is probably one of the great things about being an elected council is we can continue to go back and correct mistakes or improve our work. And I think that's what this is, is an improvement to our work, getting back to what is the intent of this, and it's to encourage people in investing and developing in Marshall, and I think that's exactly what this does.
John?
And again, same thing, just some of the past history. The discussion, EDA, was that appreciated the changes and renovations and the additions, and wanted to grant the abatement, but, you know, within the policy, it did say, you know, prior to construction, and this did not occur. So we talked about some form of penalty for that, came to, like Craig says, came to the council. We argued over that for a while. And now going back and just saying, EDA is recommending that we just delete that 10% in this one. So I'd make a motion to approve the amendment or the resolution, striking the 10%.
Motion by John, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll note one abstention. We'll move then to agenda item number 22, commission board liaison reports, actually might have not met since we last met. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Airport commission met last week. I was not able to attend. The Southwest Amateur Sports Commission met today. Lot of discussion about getting input from a number of the other activities. Soccer, dance line, a number wrestling, there's a number of other activities that are happening that are looking for some type of support or having a dialogue with the Southwest Amateur Sports Commission. And so there's a lot of discussion amongst the board about how do we accommodate that? And they're actually going to reach out in early 2020 and invite a number of those identified activities to come in and do a presentation about what are you about, what are your plans, what are your goals, and to try to encourage that communication. Because again, the mission is to be a regional destination for amateur sports and entertainment, and that was kind of the whole premise. And the vision is to establish Marshall as one of America's greatest small towns. And that includes all of the things that are coming. There's a, I mean, soccer is a sport that's coming up, and there's a lot of interest in that. And one of the members is actually very active on the Granite Falls soccer program, and we had a discussion about what the limitations and expectations are there and measures that they're taking. So it was a really good conversation. And then, of course, one of the other major topics that came up is, as our major groups, Maha, MABA, others are looking to do and schedule their tournaments, we're really missing a lot of major tournaments because we just can't provide enough rooms in the community to really host those tournaments. So again, the conversation is strong and prevalent every meeting about, you know, trying to move forward on additional hotel space. And so that continues to be one of the major focuses there, because that seems to be one of the biggest barriers to actually bringing in additional tournaments and things into the community. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. Steve?
For community services, we met, talked a lot about the pool coming up. We talked about the upcoming winter activities bulletin, which will be being mailed out next week, I think. Lot of good things coming up. The pool is a big deal. It's going to require bonding issue, and we talked about the timing of that, when to do it, when's the best time. No question that we need a new pool again. We're losing upwards of 20,000 gallons of water a day from the pool currently. It's just leaking out, and that's chlorinated treated water.
Heated?
Heated, going into the ground, basically, and into the river. And right now, we, as a council, remember when we went to visit the pool, the pool was drained, but yet there was still water in it. Why was that? Because the river and the water levels are up, and the water's seeping back into the pool from all the leaks. So.
Free water.
Free water, yeah. Not very clean. We obviously have a problem, and we have to decide what to do, and hopefully the community can get behind that. We also talked about, our board actually has several openings. We had a couple of people move. We have a student opening. This again goes to community involvement. Please, if anybody out there is interested in serving without having to run for election, our community services board, all the boards that the city has, is an excellent way to get involved, learn, give your opinion. So I would encourage anybody to come down to city hall and apply for the boards and commissions that interest you as community members. And that is all, sir.
Thank you. Ryan?
Housing commission met yesterday, and one of the items that the housing commission is looking at is hiring a firm to develop a website for the housing commission. It would provide information about our properties, frequently asked questions, contact information. And one of the important items that would be added would be the application form, so that potential renters could easily download and fill out the form, and then provide that to the housing commission. So anyway, we're looking at that and discussing what kind of a contract to have, and, you know, how much we want to spend for that type of website. Thank you.
Is there a reason that's not on the city website, that included? That might be a future staff question. I'm not sure why the housing commission would do their own website, but...
I'm guessing one possible reason is if, when people look for housing, it would go right there instead of the city, and they'd have to find it somewhere on the city website. So it'd probably be easily, more easily accessible to people, and they'd find it easier. That's the only thought I have about it.
Okay. John?
Mine did not meet.
Russ?
Library board met yesterday. We had a very good recap of events and things that happened last year, and also their prediction and outlook for 2020. Mary Beth Sinclair, Emily Rose Rasmussen, Aaron Conway, and Paula Nem has provided that to all of us. So it was very informational of all the things that they've got going on over the library. The other good news that we've got is that the library received a notification that they received $2,500, which was from a CERT grant that will convert their lighting to LED, help convert it, it's about a $5,000, $6,000 project, but they got $2,500 out of that from a grant. So that helps everything. The other two committees did not meet.
And Jim?
Mine did not meet.
Okay. We'll move on to council member individual items. Jim?
You know, as we talk budget tonight, one of the things that comes to mind is, you see, street departments is a big chunk of our budget. But as you, you know, if you travel to the communities, and I mean, you St. Paul or Capitol is an example again, I don't think they plow their streets. So if we want to cut out a levy, we can have a town that is like that. I don't think we as citizens, I wouldn't like that. But that's, as we talk budgets, we have a community that we have clean streets. We, you know, our increases are there, but we're using that to keep our town in a good, livable condition. And it's the quality of life that comes into mind. And I'm not picking on St. Paul, but you know, my son lives there, and we had to move him, and his street hasn't been plowed yet this year. So you can imagine the ice that an old man like me had to walk on. So, you can imagine the ice that an old man like me had to walk on, care in his couch. Not enjoyable. So, as we talk about levies, you know, we got to remember that Marshall has a very high quality of living, and we want to be careful of, you know, you know, budgets of, we do start cutting that, as the county, you know, and I'm not picking on the county, as they found out just recycling, our citizens have gotten used, and it's a good thing, it's called, they've gotten used to it. So, I just want to have that out there as we talk budget. Be aware of. And then remind all the public that our next city council meeting is in one week, not two. So, if you want to hear us vote in this new levy, it's in one week, not two, on the 17th. I'm done. No problem. Russ is done too. I took Russ's time.
Last week, I had the, the honor, the privilege of representing the city at Habitat for Humanity House, and I just want to bring up that they really thank the city staff, especially Ray and Curtis, for all the work that they did helping that project come to a furtation, a conclusion. So, again, I have to recommend, I bring that forth, that city staff has been thanked publicly for their work on that. So, that's all.
Thank you, Russ. John?
Just that, I think after about, we figure about 20 years, the activity has finally started in City Hall, and things are really getting shuffled around. I took a couple of minutes and just walked through. There was a few offices that seemed to be gone, moved now, so I'm not quite sure where Kyle ended up at. I think he's not sure where he ended up at.
He's in my office.
He's home office again.
But just to remind everyone that the move is going on, as we talked about a little earlier, this is going to be a lot of work for city staff, and a lot of confusion, and everything else, and I'll appreciate that, and it's all for the good. It's going to get much better. So, just remind everybody, it started.
Okay. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. One is, the Light Up the Night Parade was awesome. Grant Marshall and his wife were pretty awesome.
Really?
Yep.
Well, you should have cuddled then.
Well, they, they were, but we talked about that later, so. And, and if you, if, those of you out there, if you haven't gone to Independence Park and taken in the Light Up the Night, it is, it is amazing. It is absolutely amazing. We're very blessed to have that, and, and the work that Habitat for Humanity and, and especially Tara Plant, the work that she put in, and those staff and the volunteers, it's, it's, it's pretty cool, and the community should be really proud of that. And going off of what Jim talked about, about our streets, you know, one of the other things to think about is the city has taken some pretty major steps in investing a lot of community dollars in infrastructure to lower our chlorides, and the street department could probably plow a lot less if we did, like the metro has to do, and go really heavy with the chemicals. I, for one, am glad they don't. At first, I wake up, and I'm thinking, gosh, we didn't get that much snow. Why are they out there plowing? Well, they're out there blading, because it's going to make a cleaner, nicer street, and we don't have to dump all that sand and all that salt down. And I agree, I've got a, one of my good friends and coworkers lives on, up the hill in North Duluth. Jim, we talked a lot about Duluth with you here. He was landlocked for three days before the road grader went. He had his driveway cleaned out. The, halfway through the second day, the snow was higher than the handles on his snowblower, and it took another day and a half for the city to be able to get through and open that up. And it's not because they do a bad job, it's just that they had that much going on. So, we really do have a high quality of life here. Is it free? No, absolutely not. But it has, I think, a lot more value than it does cost, and I think we should, when you see the city staff, thank them for that. City and county, because it is, it's not just the city, it's Lyon County, too. We're, we're pretty blessed out here. That's, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Steve?
I yield my time.
I have nothing.
And I, I just have one thing earlier this evening. I passed out to the council some correspondence I received from the State Department of Human Services, along with a number of social service agencies regarding information regarding the refugee resettlement and executive order, and I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention, because I had received that. However, this is not a, an item that the cities, any city, including a city marshal, has any authority or over. It's really advocated or thrust on the counties. So, so it's not an agenda item for the city council, it's not an action item for the city council. City council could provide input to the county to make their views known, but, but at the end of the day, it is really a county decision. I believe that will be on their, a future agenda. With that, I'll move on then to staff reports. Sharon?
Mayor and council members, just to follow up on Council Member Dee Kramer's comments on the move, we did move up the moving a little bit, and this was at the suggestion of the, of the moving company. They really wanted to move some of the larger items first, and so, we originally anticipated trying to move furniture into SMSU during Christmas break to be less disruptive, and that got changed. And I think it went fairly well. They didn't receive a lot of complaints at SMSU, and they did a fantastic job moving quite a few items, as, as Council Member Dee Kramer noted. And so, we may be able to kind of revise the number of days we are going to have the moving company move. I said this earlier, I want to say it again. We had really good participation and cooperation from staff, and a lot of the moving logistics was handled by Glenn Olson, Dave Parson, and Kyle Box. So, I really appreciate their work in educating, communicating with staff, and then just doing a lot of the day-to-day with the, with the moving. We are actually going to do a public notice and print it in the newspaper and post it wherever we can, and it'll serve as a press release, too. The newspaper did get it yesterday, but we'll make sure that that gets out there. We'll have a map of locations of parking. And just to reiterate, staff will not be at SMSU until December 30th. And so, until then, if there's a need for services, residents, visitors should still come to City Hall until December 30th, at which time we'll be at SMSU. And we'll do some more education on that. And that is all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Glenn?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Just a couple of things. Russ mentioned the Habitat House, and we really wanted a special thank you to Gary Becker, who was kind of the liaison and contact person for us. Really good work that went on out there. The move is going great. It's, it's a hubbub around there, and if anyone does have questions or needs to come in for permits, just give us a call, we'll answer the phone and take care of you wherever we need to. So, that's all I've got for today.
Okay. Thank you, Glenn. Dennis?
Same, same stuff as every time. Helena, still working on that, and MMU, a selling that property.
What are you going to do when Helen is done?
Think we can save in the levy then.
Okay. So, we'll move on to the remaining items on the agenda, which are, include the administrative brief, administrative report for your information, as well as the information items, including the building permits, as well as the listing of upcoming meetings. Is there any item, any additional item to come forward this evening?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim to adjourn. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Motion passes. We're adjourned.